Yep.
Oh. Hello, everyone. And I was gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. And um let's do roll call of committee members. Amber Brown, I are here.
Susan Divinigini here.
Kate McDonald here. Jinx, kind of.
I got you both, you're good.
And then Maggie won't hear.
And then Maggie's not here, okay. Um, okay, does anyone wanna do the school verse?
I can do it.
Okay. Thank you, Kate.
This, okay. This is our school, may peace dwell here. May the rooms be full of contentment. May love abide here. Love of one another, love of our school, and love of life itself. Let us remember that as many hands build a house, so many hearts build a school.
Thank you. Um, any agenda, oh no, any audience to address the committee? Okay, I think we're good, so move on to any agenda modifications.
We do not have all four of the contracts that are on here right now, but when we get there, I'll discuss that, what's going on.
Okay, so we're still discussing.
Yeah, so I can still tell you where we are with it.
Okay.
Cool.
That should be fine. Okay. And we can approve minutes from July 12, 2022. So I will go ahead and make an emotion unless anybody has some comments. Okay, I will go ahead and make a motion to approve the minutes from July 12, 2022, if I can give a second.
I can second it.
Thank you, Kate. And Amber Brown, I.
Susan Divinigini, I.
Karen Comes, I.
Kate McDonald, I.
And then um we're still teleconferencing during the state of emergency, it's all further notice, or I think that's from the beginning of the year, um calendar year, so we're good with that. Um, and then we're on to financial reports for Charter Impact. You, Jim, or is he here, there he is. Yeah, Jim's here.
All right, yeah, really, really nothing yet this month. Um, quick turnaround in July is not a particularly meaningful month. Um, but we did wanna check in on cash and with the actions taken in the last month, cash is solid today, right? Right where we projected it, actually, we talked about the last month, actually ahead, we had some positive contingencies come through. Um, so you could report that cash is, as we discussed at the last meeting, same plan, looking at the rest of the year, but you are strengthened through the early part of the year, which is our greatest worry. Um, and then really financially, what we're looking at is, as we're starting August, is the budget revision. Like, how do you want the budget to look so that we report out next month when we do the forecast? Um, we have a more true view what we think the year is gonna be than the original budget, which we know uh was before so many adjustments were required.
Okay, pretty simple and straightforward, good news again. Thank you, Jim. Um, we still need to pass this along, though, right, to?
I don't know that we do, we don't have anything, I mean, Jim can come to the meeting and say the same thing.
Okay, yes. I think, okay, great.
I don't think we actually need, there's no details for us to.
Okay, makes sense. Okay.
Um, Jim, I did have a question for you. Um, last time we met, we, um, the Hold Harmless had just come through. Um, and I didn't know, um, you said, I think last time you said that maybe there was, there was, you know, more information to come, that, you know, just things are kind of changing, is there any new information when it, since the last time we met?
No, the, the best information is confusion.
Okay.
So, so it's, it's a positive, the Hold Harmless was approved, this is good. I'm a quick look at what we would have estimated. So, so challenge for us, uh, so it's early August, so hopefully soon, audit's about a month away. Um, we are certain that this needs to go into the audit for this year. Um, as a nonprofit organization, and I'm confident your auditors will agree with that. CDE doesn't agree. So CDE hasn't get, isn't giving us any information, so we're gonna have to go with our calculation. And so I think as we discussed, our calculation was approximately 500,000. Um, and I don't think anything's changed uh to, to alter that. The only risk was, the vast majority of the funding was in the second pool of money, which was technically capped statewide. But one, we're not certain that, if all, we don't know exactly who it would impact and whether or not it would reach the cap. And, and two, they implied that the state would cover it if it reached the cap, that it would be funded. So we're operating under the assumption that it will be fully funded. Um, the official calculation from CDE won't come until January. But we like to believe between now and then they'll release something, you know? And so um the first event is this month, we're working on the report to the state on how last year ended before we go to audit. And like I said, the audit is gonna say we have to include this, we, um, with our calculation. But the state said, don't include it in your first report. So we're gonna have a disconnect, and so that's gonna result in confusion. But, but we've, at least we've been discussing it, so we can continue operating under the assumption we've had since last month.
All right, thank you, Jim.
Be great, anything else? All right, moving on to um business.
Is that me, I guess so, so, um, we were informed and verified um last month by Charter Impact, thank you for them, um, to check that um there was an increase starting on 1/23, uh, January 23, there's an increase expected for um the, the uh minimum wage. So then that is something that he is actually required to do because the um inflation, um, the inflation is over 7%, so he had to do a minimum wage increase, which he has done. So based on that, and that, of course, is something that we have continued to work with. I have proposed new salary schedules. Um, this is the first one and of two considered for the classified schedule. This simply puts that extra 50 cents an hour in column three and goes from there. Um, there is a, a second one that I devised for you to look at as well. Um, because in, in working and looking and comparing to Chico Unified, this more closely matches um their schedule. So they have a larger raise in first, the first five years, and then um the, the employees don't get a raise again for five years, so that's, that's um, so that's what this one is. And so we were looking at those two possibilities for classified.
I know possible for those five, I was like, what's the difference, you know? Like, is it, there, is there a specific, that makes sense, I mean, generally, the first five, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I see, yeah, that's.
Six and seven.
Pretty minimal, but I.
Yeah, it's, yeah, so, um, you know, and so I just, once I figured that out, I just made the decision to go ahead and propose, show you both of them and let, you know, think about what you want. Um, then I also have the certificate of management. The certificate of management are simply the um, the increase that matches the same, same.
Yeah, yeah, there's no other change. Is there only one version of that?
There's only one version of each of the certificated and management.
Okay.
So the, um, the inter, go back up to the inter, I, I did add the line for interns on here. We had mentioned before, and there's a asterisk down below, that says that the pay scale doesn't start until you're completely certified, so you wouldn't be um certificated, so you wouldn't actually start on that first line until you have your certificate, but it felt like we needed to clarify that interns will get that same amount as well, because that is based on, again, on the minimum wage.
And first, I mean, their first year is like, it's the other.
Yeah, right, so there's.
First year teacher, first year teacher.
Right.
Okay. Yeah.
I didn't want that to change, so that's, that was, that was the only addition here. And I will also get the caveat that we haven't seen um Chico Unified's updated pay scale. They still have the 21, 22 pay scale on there, so we don't know um what changes they'll make. But if it's based on the same process as the classified, it will probably be similar to this.
Okay. Um. Now, isn't minimum wage supposed to go up for the next like three years, is that?
No, we got through that, that was, we had three years that, to get it up to 15 dollars an hour for um employers of 50 or more, we're kinda right on that line, so we went with the 50 or more. And then this is an additional step, and from now on, that's what the requirement is, is that the government will need to do a minimum wage increase whenever inflation is over 7%.
Got it, okay.
So that's, that's, yeah, I learned that.
Thanks to my wonderful Charter Impact people. Okay.
Nope, this is happening, so that's what's, so that's, that's the change there.
Okay, so do we want to wait to submit more till we see, or you think the Chico Unified or?
I feel like we need to get it going, we can always go back and say, oh, look, it's not going to be less than this.
Right, right.
So it might be more, and we might wanna look at that from a competitive standpoint, or we might want to something in effect, I agree later.
And then for budgeting purposes, do we up the budget according to this then?
Yes, so that will adjust, this will inform Jim. Um, what he needs to do for the budget for next, the updated budget, also, makes sense. And we did have some, after the July information from the state came through, we did have some room in the budget. So, yeah, so this seems like the right thing to spend.
Good timing, yeah, 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 and I like the, I mean, I, no, we'll sit to the board, but I totally support like increasing quicker the first five years, because we want people to stay, retraining is more work than just giving somebody a little bump up, a little bit more, and then, you know, once people are vested in five years, there's other benefits, right? So, yeah, I think that'd be great, okay, cool.
Okay, the one change we'd like to suggest we make, and then somebody else may have a question.
Yep.
Is I have an effective date of September 1st, I would like to move that back to August 1st, so that the aides, the new aides, as they come in, actually get their first paycheck with that new change. So, and of course with the um, with the, all of the staff, I just would wanna move it back.
Makes sense, yeah, it's technically, right, we start August, okay, and then what did you have to say, sorry, Kate, go ahead.
It's okay, um, so when um we, we look at the budget, can we get the numbers on um what the difference will be? Um, I'm just really, I wish I had them right now, cuz I'm just really curious how this um pay scale will affect the budget? Like, what kind of, I mean, as a, as a teacher who's been here, this is 11 years as a teacher, 12 at the school. Um, while I am like exceedingly joyful about what I'm seeing in front of me, it's just like, it's almost like hard to believe, you know, like, and hard to believe that we have the space in the budget. Um, so I look, you know, I'm excited to see like how this will.
It, it's a, a little over, it's actually 3.33% additional um rates. So, you take the number for the payroll that's in the current budget and multiply it by 103.33, that would affect of it.
Great.
It's a 3.33.
3.33, it's increasing.
For payroll, that's pretty minimal.
Yeah, and, and that will push everyone already receiving, it's the two and a half percent raise for the year, so they'll, overall, it'll be um over 5% raise. Close to a 6% raise overall.
Yeah, overall, it's delightfully shocking. Is it?
I, it's, yeah, I know exactly what you think, I, I know how you feel, Kate. It's, but the COLA this year was very large, larger than I've ever seen it before. And so therefore, this feels reasonable.
Great, do we know what that COLA is offhand?
Uh, Jim, do you know it?
Yeah, it's approximately 13%.
Wow.
And, but, and, and it's, it's, so they doubled it up, it was about seven, and then they added it, they doubled it, and there was no way I would believe that as we approached June. Um, but there is, it's provided with a warning for the future. Um, maybe, maybe this coming year will be okay again, but there's more and more warnings that expect flat going forward. But good news that you have it now.
So the, yeah, so usually a COLA is like 1 or 2%, you know? And 3% COLA is really big. So I think what they're trying to do right now is give us funding, knowing everything we're dealing with right now. But I would never expect a 12%, 13% COLA ever again, I, that's, um, yeah, that's crazy, so, crazy high. Um, but we have a lot to do, so it's nice to have.
I'm a couple of questions and comments. I am concerned that, you know, the highest salary on this list, the way it increases exponentially, is definitely exceeding Chico Unified and their cap, I mean, I haven't seen their recent, I mean, their newest salary schedule, but, but I guarantee that like their highest salary will not be $171,000, it'll, it'll cap much lower than that, so that is a concern in a budget sense for me. And, and also, I mean, teachers would hate me for saying this, but we're, we're increasing at a higher percent, we're increasing at a higher percent than they are, which is leading to this rapid growth even in column one. So, yeah, I'm just, I, I think by looking at this and can, if I were to compare this to the latest Chico Unified's salary schedule, I, I would say ours is better.
Are you concerned enough to wanna hold off on moving that through to the, through this month? We could do the classified and leave the other two for another month, so we can look at it? Because when you say that, then I start going, did I make a mistake in the calculation? Do I need to go back and double check my?
Well, I'm looking, I'm looking, let me go back to the Chico Unified. Their higher salary, 31 plus years' experience with the masters and as many units as you can get is $108,000 on the current one.
Okay, so yeah, that is um, a pretty high, I, it's, so yeah, so that is a question, whether we want to do something like, say, after 20 years, you know, that sort of change after 15 years. Um, yeah, we wanna do something different, that's, that's definitely a possibility.
So I wonder, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Um, I wonder, I, I don't have it in front of me, but what our current pay scale, what the current ceiling is? If this one is 171 at 24 years, like what is our equivalent? I think I could, I could probably pull it up.
Yeah, if you're online, I don't have that.
I think Alex is trying to pull it up right now.
Hmm, oh yeah, that's a heavy big change.
Karen, good catch.
So.
I mean, I wanna drive a Bentley, but, you know.
Yeah, so why don't we um put off this one, because maybe we need, I need to figure out what I did wrong. You know, I may need to relook at the calculations to make sure I did that correctly. So. Yeah, that's, cuz that's way too, that's more than a 3% increase.
Yeah.
Why this, I don't understand why that does that. All I do is plug the numbers into the spreadsheet, so it's quite possible I put something in it wrong.
Or I got correctors easily, yeah, okay, cool. You didn't notice anything on the uh the uncertified for the, uh, classified, right, Karen, that looked good?
I'll have to go back and look at that, sorry. Um, so on this scale, could you go back to the new scale, the proposed one? Like, I'm seeing where we're at 100,420, like right in the middle on the last column. Then it goes up to 105, so, so right there, that's close to a 5% increase.
Yeah, so that's my mistake, probably. Probably did 5%, the rest is away from something.
Probably. Don't worry, so.
Your cap pretty normal at a certain uh year, what is it, that's usually at 20 years?
20 years or 25 years.
Okay, so.
You know, and this, the other pay scale also, and I haven't really looked closely back at Chico Unified's classified schedule or certificated schedule, was focusing on the classifieds.
Okay.
I was in the middle of trying to hire, so.
So we'll look back, we'll wait on this one.
Okay.
Is that, yeah, I think, obviously, um, to fix it, and then the classified one.
Uh, real quick, last question was, was this planning on being implemented during this school year?
Yes, well, it has to be entered, it has to be implemented by January 1st of this.
Okay, and, and would we be writing new con, um, signing new contracts then, or would?
Or we would uh make changes in initial.
Okay.
Save a little uh paper and pen.
Okay.
And Susan, since we are kind of pushing it back and gonna take a closer look at those numbers, will we still honor the August retroactive date for the teacher pay scale?
What do you think, Kate?
I think we should.
Then, yeah.
I'm just checking, I'm taking notes over here for the faculty, so.
This is my proposal, this is your decision, this is me saying we need to do something about this, this isn't me saying.
And, and then I think, um, I think you said it was like a 3.33% in the payroll, so you just took the, what, who we have now, is that based off of those hard, like who we have now, and if I was just gonna piece them all to here, this is what I would do? Okay.
That's what it should be.
Okay. Cuz I know that we're doing better on cap, I think, you know, that payroll's our biggest expense, I'm sure.
Yeah, yeah, it's the one, I mean, this always makes me nervous, this is the way education goes. But an increase every year when we're not necessarily making more money every year. I come from private industry, we would never do that in private industry.
Right.
So it's, but this is what, um, how pay scales are set up. And so that's, that always makes me nervous, you know, when you start getting employees that are 10 or 15 years out there here, you start hitting that wall.
Yeah, definitely.
But overall, it's been working, so.
And that would make sense, cuz they already put into effect their two and a half percent raise, that's already on the budget, so this is around 3,
Yeah, so.
3% which you calculated about going down, so that would make sense. And given take, there's maybe somebody that has to be bumped a little bit more or something, so, okay, that would, that would make sense.
All right.
All right, cool, so um then we need a motion to send the classified um proposed um pay, pay uh scale to the board, so I can go ahead and make.
Um, I, I'm sorry, but I'm looking at both the classified scales, and if I'm moving from left to right, like say from 1550 to 1589, I'd have to check that one, but in the second one, 1550 to $16.28, that's a 5% annual increase right there.
Yes, it is, uh, Karen.
Okay.
Again, that second one is based on Chico Unified, that's what they do, and then they stop giving raises at they, whereas we have, I think, a two and a half percent raise each year for the first 10 years, they have a 5% raise for the first five years. So that's why I was um, the, so proposal two is based on what Chico Unified does. Proposal one is our current pay scale.
Okay, are we voting on, on the second one then?
Well, you need to, somebody needs to give a motion as to which you want to use, or how, and then we can have a further discussion also.
So is it normal, I know I was like ready to make a motion, but now that Karen brought it up, is it normal that when you start hitting 20 years, I mean, you're kinda getting up there with teacher salaries?
We need to.
Well, it de, it depends on what line you're at, what your position is.
I just kind of.
Yes, it is, it is normal.
Okay, I just making sure, I was doing like $50.
I've known um in larger organizations, for example, secretaries to be making over 100,000.
Okay, okay.
And so it, it's because of the amount of time that they work and their experience in the job, so yes, it is.
Okay.
It's not.
I just based it off of like $50 an hour, just kinda took somewhere that was in the upper, it would be like, they would be on the highest scale.
Yeah, so, and the, the people at the bottom, of course, the last scale is actually counselors, so those are people with master's degrees.
Oh, well, that makes sense then, okay, I didn't see that, all right, I'm, this is all fairly new to me, so, okay.
Also want us to make a change to line 10, because we've changed her title to wellness worker.
Okay.
Fix that, that's what I'm gonna do, yeah.
That was just a change in title, I think.
Yeah, it's just a change in title, there's no change.
I wasn't thinking classified, these are, I was thinking these are like just all aides, I'm not thinking that they could be,
Yeah.
have a higher levels of education or potential, that, okay. Oh, yeah, and the executive assistant too, especially, okay, school nurse, yeah, that makes sense to me. So those are.
I, I would like to make a motion, but before that, I did wanna comment that um, you know, in our interview aide process, it does feel like we are seeking more, we're definitely looking for more qualified employees than perhaps Blue Hawk has done in the past. Um, we're asking for things like transcripts, so what I'm saying is I, I think our hiring process has taken some good steps forward. But that's why I lean towards approving um the new proposed scale.
Okay, the other thing too, Karen, is if you notice on the classifications, instructional aide is um, has, is there for those who do not have those additional, and that we intentionally a couple of years ago put in the paraprofessional line on four, and that's, there's a qualification for that, and that comes from um the uh No Child Left Behind Act, actually, where
Oh, great.
level of experience, of, of education and training, in order to get that, they need to be able to do math at a certain level and so forth. So, so that already takes a little bit of that. What um is continuing to be a concern for me is uh the, the higher need for training on behavioral issues, which isn't really considered as part of the paraprofessional training, so that's, that's a whole nother discussion and thought that I'm having, but we're not ready to address that now.
Okay, go ahead.
I guess the only thing I wanna see is the current um classified schedule. Thank you. Okay.
Not that far off, right? I mean, it's pretty close.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. Okay, thank you.
So does everyone feel comfortable with moving forward with the classified, or want to give a motion?
I will move to recommend to the board proposal number two on the classified hourly rate schedule.
I will second that.
It's okay for us to just do the second one, okay, cool. Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
So.
Imagine it should not be considered until we have the certificate.
Right, okay, cool, so we can go for a vote, um, Amber Brown, I.
Susan Dominique, I.
Here comes I.
Kate McDonald, I.
Okay, sounds like we're approved and ready to go for the classified. Thank you for the discussion on that, you guys are a wealth of knowledge that I did not have. Okay, so go back to the other ones next time, and yeah, sorry, going on to.
Some contract reviews and approvals, will you share, Ellie's? And I did just forward you Riley's, it's just why Riley's here, so we.
Um, did you share Ellie's with me as well?
I did. Do it again.
Google just changed.
So were you saying that we have two to do and not?
Right.
Two, no?
Look at that, I just sent me yours too.
Oh.
Yeah, if you could resign me, Ellie's.
I don't know if you guys can hear us, but Susan's just sending over the contracts to Alex.
Sent to the kid. Know what? I can't really talk to you, but. Send you that, because that's what's going on. Ellie has ownership, she's just, um, mission to share, so that's.
And what are these contracts for? Okay, perfect, alright.
So, um, in looking at some of the work that we need to do here, I reached out first to Ellie about this one, so I'll talk about this. With two intents in mind. She knows our school and our needs. And one was to help us with a referral process for students that are struggling. Looking at that and seeing how we can build the collaborative teams, those are the grade level teams, to do their work at that level, so that we have more of a, so we have a faster process. Right now, our process can take a significant period of time, and how, so we're looking at how we might be able to, to do that, so that was part of working with Ellie. And the other part that's significant is to continue our work with equity and diversity. We had Lindsay with us last year, she did a great job, but equity has, but Ellie has a different and strong perspective on that as well, and so she is prepared to do some work both individually with teachers and with groups on how we're using equity, so. So I asked her to put forward a proposal to support some of that, and, and part of that is just knowing the work level that I hold right now, being able to give some of that to someone who can focus fully on these things, instead of me trying to create and, and get it all done, so. And as I am taking on more of the workflows, a significant amount of workflow for special education and overseeing that, I am loving that new goal, but I'm also realistic that some of the other stuff isn't going to get done if I have to do it all. So that was one of my reasons for, for looking into include pulling Ellie in to help us with those things.
So, before we move on, Ellie is a consultant?
She would be coming back in as a consultant.
Oh, should I know who she is, is she?
Ellie Glassman did our ELA last few years.
Okay, I'm sorry, that's why I was like.
Yeah, she's, she's been, um, a teacher here for three years, she's moved now to Oregon with her partner, and, um, because of his job up there.
Okay.
And, um, so she is, uh, so she and I had that conversation, and a couple of other staff as well, as to whether or not she could be helpful in supporting us getting through some of the, the work we need to be doing here, so.
So will she be working, like, remotely from there?
Remotely, but there is also some work for her to be here, that she can be outside as well.
Okay. For that, and there's, yeah, I was gonna say, and so then there'll be, will we be paying for transportation when she does come, is that written?
She has asked for some money for transportation, for mileage and so forth, but not, we're not paying the plane trip.
Okay, that, she's standing there.
So Susan, would this be for the 2022, 22, 23 school year?
Yes, it would be.
Okay.
Uh, I'm Susan. I'm really feeling like the MTSS team that I'm on right now, we're very driven, and like, you know, I recently went to a training on racism in mathematics. We're all into SEL right now. So my own, I, I have all the faith in Ellie in the world, but, but at the same time, i- if she's going to be addressing some of the same things that our team could address as a school, I don't know if that's the best decision to hire an outside resource. But, but that, that's just how I'm feeling right now, is that this, this team, we have more of a clear direction than we haven't had in the past with MTSS, like, and, and, um, yeah.
Okay, so would you suggest we maybe, um, put this aside for now until, until we have a better sense of how the MTSS team is working?
Yes, I would, I would, and I would also like to just, you know, have Ellie part of our network as a, as the MTSS team, if that makes sense, because it's, it's when Lindsay would come visit us, I did feel like the information she's presenting is stuff that we could present on our own with, with just a little time.
Okay, so, and that's, that's one of those, um, issues that's come up, I mean, that we still don't have a sense and probably won't until the end of this week with, uh, as to what exactly the MTSS team is going to be doing, and I didn't want some of the other balls to drop in the meantime. So, you know, and I think that, um, I can go back to Ellie and say, we're not ready to approve the con- contract yet, um, so we can hold off, and then maybe once leadership gets going and we can have that discussions, leadership, knowing that she might be available to help us, how does that sound?
That sounds good, and I don't, we, we're not planning to have Ellie present anything anytime in the near future, are we, like, in the first month of school or anything?
We haven't made those plans, didn't know.
Okay, yes, then, then I would hold off on that personally.
Right.
I do also wonder, Susan, about, um, like, the EDI work, the equity and diversity, um, we do have some great resources in, you know, in our community currently, like, um, I know Darleja and Claire, we also have Alicia Trider on the parent council. There might be something they'd have to offer, though I do know that Ellie's perspective is also quite delightful too, and really quality, so. Just thoughts.
That's why I came to you guys for your thoughts.
Um.
So there's none of those.
Oh, I mean, I have some similar feelings and additional feelings on why we should probably hold off on this, but also, I don't want you to feel like you're not being supported if you need help, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Because that's important too.
And I think, um, I think Kyron's point with the MTSS team and the leadership team is valid.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I was not able to go with them this year, and, um, so I have not been part of the planning of what they're doing, so I think we will know more, and of course, we're just starting. So we will know more over the next two weeks, so if I'm feeling like there is still a niche that I need Ellie's support on, then, and she, you know, even if she comes in and checks in with leadership to make sure we're on forward tasks or something like that, she, you know, I, we can do that, so I can reach out to her and say, you know, that the finance committee held off on approving her contract until we get a little further down the road with the leadership team that's gone to MTSS.
Yeah. Yeah, sorry, Kyron.
Also, Susan, you know, uh, we have four staff members that are committed to the NorCal ELC, which will have a great deal of overlap with MTSS, I think our goals that we present there will be what we chose into address in MTSS. And, um, we also had a discussion at the MTSS training about, you brought up Rindy, we, unfortunately, we weren't able to speak with her directly during the conference, but another lady, I don't have her name offhand, but, um, she recommended that we use Rindy as someone, an outside person to help us do the FEA document, which basically goes through all our practices at the school, and I was really into that idea, so, so I guess what I'm saying is, we would have possibly an outside influence from our own school district, or from our own community.
Alright. Yeah, and then I, the last comment I'll make is that my two senses to steer probably away from parents, unless it's going to be like a parent group giving a full perspective, and not just picking and choosing some parents, because that has been an issue in the past, so if we're going to bring parents in, it should probably be like a range of perspective of parents, or not at all. But it seems to me like the faculty's been doing a great job with this, and we've moved really far forward where we started at, so.
Yeah, still have the equity text.
For.
Best for us doing, so.
Yeah.
There, there's another piece that we can bring up to that
Right.
team, to say, what is it where?
Oh, that's a great idea. Okay, so we're putting this one on the back burner.
Okay.
And then, um, moving on to the next.
Yeah, so the next one is Brylins, and I'm hoping that you did get that one. And there is Brylins, and her smiling face, um, willing to continue to support Luke from her home office now. Do you have that document, Alex, or do you want me to send it again? And I just sent it to the.
Yeah, if you could send me Emma's and Riley's.
Okay. Okay, I've sent Brylins again, so hopefully you've got an email, now it just says forwarded you in this contract, which I haven't had a chance to read yet, so.
Kiran and Kate, can you see that? Am I still sharing my screen?
So, um, this is my thought, and again, reaching out to Riley and looking at, at a couple of at least, and, and items on this list, um, the first one is the expanded learning program. Brylins did an excellent summer camp for us about in 2019, we covered, which we had every intention of continuing, but of course, didn't happen, which could be reflected well in our, um, expanded learning program. That is, that, um, we have more days, and we've had longer days for students, um, and reaching out to, to Riley was because when she did the WOW program, the budget is balanced, she covered costs through the, the parents paying for it. And so she did the full gamut of, of what needed to be done, and it was also very Waldorf oriented. So I was looking at her to help us really do that planning, how can we take the budget we're given with the realization that it's not going to pay for everything, and also, so also we would need someone, some of the parents, those that were not lucky, come to pay more of it, and that sort of, of issue, and I felt like she had the talent and time to be able to do that. The second one was the preschool program, which she's already started doing at, as an employee last year, started doing the research for, and we, again, on the preschool program, are really at the phase of primarily needing to know how it's going to pay for itself, to make sure we're there, so those two are that. Um, I had a, a board member reach out to me and ask me to look into developing an additional site in Oroville, and that takes a lot of time and energy, so that was a third one that I thought could be done offsite by consultants. And then as we get into the charter renewal this year, I'm doing some work on that. So those are items that would be deliverables for her, and, um, so we went through and gave some of the, the project items that would need to be done on this. That's your estimated, we're not paying her an hourly rate, but that's how we estimated the cost.
Susan, may I comment on this?
In just a minute, Riley. Okay, so this last part is just some boilerplate stuff that says we're not going to pay our social security and, you know, how to terminate it, we need to.
And that's too, because of the amount of hours, right? Because she'll be under like thirty something that there's.
Well, she's going to, to work for us as an independent contractor.
Oh, okay.
And so we will pay her based on how she invoices us with, and she would invoice us based on where she is in the projects. So we would say, okay, we'll pay this amount because you're at that project. So the hourly piece is really how we estimated what we felt it would be likely to take her to do.
Right, makes sense.
I'm really sorry, I missed the page before this.
Question, I know everyone's going to have questions, I won't move quick. Who would do this if it wasn't Riley?
Me.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Maybe you pay me a lot more than that.
Yeah, I know. It was relevant, yes, it was for a reason. So, yeah, so this would normally be you, and we have all this extra, well, funding.
If we have a funding, and I think that my concern, especially with expanding the learning program and preschool program, those two, is they need to be developed in a way that serves the community and is, is, and pays for itself. We don't want to start pulling money from the classrooms to pay for an after-school program.
And as well, and as well for.
And it's Waldorf based.
Yeah, yeah.
And those details, for someone to have the time really to focus on that.
Agreed.
This is, this is my concern, whereas I am moving my focus into making sure we're serving the special education program, making sure that the aides are able to do what they need to do, the faculty and so forth. And so as my, as I move from the ability to like, hey, I'm going to plan the expanded learning program, I have to be realistic with, I am capable of doing. And so to have somebody that can focus on that and has a proven record of doing it well, felt like a good, a good way to move.
I have one more question. I know this would be written specifically in our contract. So if some other projects came up, knowing that we kind of approved her within those twenty hours, is that something, I guess that would maybe be for Riley, new to discuss, if that would be something she'd be interested in? Because I know we've talked about maybe even like extending some days for junior high level. That would be another thing. I was just thinking about sustainable school stuff, basically, right? Say, sustainable school projects, which should be open to us, like writing that into the contract that if other projects arise, the law that stays within her understanding of the hours, would she be open to doing those?
So I think it's a good time to let Riley speak.
Okay.
Because she has some comments.
Okay, and then I'll make sure everyone gets to.
Hi, everyone. First, I just want to say thank you for asking questions. And please don't feel the need to hold back just because I'm here attending. So I will not take offense to anything that you might say. Yes, I am totally open to more projects. I believe there's a line, yes, that said, this contract may be amended if agreed upon by both parties. For, in my mind, if more projects came up that could work within that twenty hour timeframe, that would be great. I fully intend on logging how much time I spend on doing each task, so it's efficient and not just wasted hours and wasted pay. I, I do care about the school and I want to help out, and I'm thankful Susan reached out to me. This work feels really exciting for me. And I do intend on doing it mostly remote, but there will be occasions where I plan to be with the community. For example, surveys Susan and I talked about, if there were things that needed facilitation, especially in terms of the third project for the new school development, there would definitely be a lot of moments needed with the whole community for that. So I intend on doing some hybrid activities. But for the most part, it would be independent and remote. And feel free to ask any questions.
What was project three, the new charter school development?
So I had a member of our board who's active in the Oroville community, ask, say that they are looking, there's only one charter. There's an independent state charter, and then there's only one classroom charter in Oroville. And so they wanted, they asked me to look into what it would take to start a Waldorf charter in Oroville.
Right.
So, you know, we don't actually have a lot of Oroville students right now. We have about ten. We used to have more, and one of the reasons, of course, that students, is the transportation from Oroville here is a big commitment. So, so, you know, it would, I'm sure be a smaller program, combined classes. Waldorf schools do combine classes in other schools. And, but to look in that, into that, to see if that's something that there's a need for and a want in Oroville. And what it would take to do that is a big project. And as I said, I'm doing special ed, we're also working on a new building for ourselves. Everybody tells me those are really big projects. And so like, if we want to continue, you know, we would love, you know, for example, if we can see there's a need for a school or an interest in a school at Oroville, then, you know, in two years, we could be starting that program. And that balance that we have here of asking about specialties and can we afford them would change, because we would then have two sites and would be sharing our specialties between the two sites. And this is what Sacramento Waldorf does, the Sacramento, Golden Valley is their name, Kate might remember their names.
Yeah, it's Golden Valley.
They have two sites in the Sacramento area, so it would be similar to that.
I love it. Charter renewal, would, so would this mean, Riley, that you're working to help edit our charter, if you will? And, go ahead. No, you can go ahead.
When Susan and I met, I, she suggested that I would help with some facilitation, which I plan on doing some facilitation training to help with that process. So I would help facilitate, could help edit. We had created the bullet point list on the previous page briefly. So if there were other suggestions for bullet points, I'd be happy to add those in, since this will be going to the board tomorrow. But the, the anticipated contract, contract start date is the twenty ninth of August. So there could be time to change this if needed.
Awesome, and sorry I didn't catch everything in the bullet points earlier. And will you be there to be in front of Chico Unified School District when they ask us tough questions? I mean, that's what I do.
I think that's a call that maybe you need to make. I would be fine too, but I think that has to come from Susan.
Oh, Karen, it's, it's not in this contract.
Okay.
It's not in this contract, because this contract is for this year, and that won't happen this year. So we can figure that out as, as time goes on, both with Riley's availability and all of that, but, yeah.
So it'll be in two thousand twenty-four when we are meeting with Chico Unified?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Kate, did you have any comment? Oh, go ahead.
I could just throw my two cents in. I think this all looks really good. And I think that Riley would do fantastic at all of these projects. Looking at places in the school that we might be able to like do these jobs for Susan, I don't really think there's, there's space on anyone's plates right now to do these things, and definitely not on Susan's. So, yeah, I'm thinking it looks pretty good from my perspective.
Yeah, I'm totally in agreement. These are massive projects, especially if you're going to be pulled in different directions. I actually wrote down add value, because I think it's going to add value to the Blue Oak, Blue Oak in general. So I think whenever you're going to spend a little bit, which is pretty minimal, what the cost to have Riley doing these projects that we really need, and that are going to add so much more value to Blue Oak in general. And are basically, these are mostly things that are funded. So it's really just her salary to, or her hourly rate to help out. So I think it's great. So if anyone, no one else has any other comments, we can entertain a motion to send this to the charter council.
Okay, I will move to approve these contracts with Riley for, to the charter council or send them to them for review.
I can second that.
Thank you, Kate. Karen, did you have something else? No? Okay. So we'll go for a vote. Amber Brown, aye. Susan Divinigetti, aye.
Kate McDonald, aye.
Sorry, Karen Combs, aye.
Thank you. Great, all right.
Well, I'm going to jump off.
Good to see you, Riley.
Thank you, Riley.
Okay, the next contract review is Emma Todd, who worked with us last year as a counselor. She has a new private business that she is doing, and she reached out to me. We currently do not have an onsite counselor. We have, I think I got one finally today, but we don't have anybody to do counseling onsite. And so she and I spoke last week and then again today about her team providing at least the, some of the referral work and some of the basic work of a counselor for us. She, so she, since, send me the contract now so we can start talking about it. So basically, she would be offering sixteen hours a week, where she has four different counselors working with us, with her. One of them is Laura, she used to be on our board, actually, a couple of years ago. And I like the concept that she's bringing forward. First of all, Emma is a Waldorf student for her entire elementary and, and high school years. So she, she has that connection still with Waldorf, so, so works well with our community. And she has four counselors working for her. And so we talked about the fact that that could be very helpful for serving different students, addressing, you know, different needs. She talked about one of them is very logical and another one that's very much, you know, about feeling and how having those kind of options, rather than just one person, could be very helpful to us. So, so this was the option, sixteen hours a week. It's at, I believe she proposed sixty-five dollars an hour, which is, which is a, a normal level, considering we are not paying any benefits or anything for that. So, so asking them to cover that is realistic. Anyway, so this is an option we have available and to help us out with that particular need for students.
Hey, Susan, you said that, that she, her team would be providing referral work and basic work of a counselor. Can you expand on what that would look like, the basic work of a counselor?
So when you have a student that you feel has a need, you would refer them, as we have in the past, to the, to her service. We also may have an additional discussion screening to go there also. But, so then the counselors would be meeting with, focusing on meeting the needs of those students, and if they need an outside referral, getting that done for them. So they would not necessarily ask, our counselors have attempted to do in the past, though they're capable of it, they would not necessarily be contracted to do staff trainings and things like that. This is just to make sure that we have the resources available for the children. You know, and we, we might contract with them for additional, and that might work out. But at this point, my main concern is that we have the resources available for the children. So that.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that, Susan. I wonder about the sixteen hours, just thinking about all of the kids in need that we do have. That's a lot of work for sixteen hours. You know, just a lot of kids who need them, so.
Yeah, it is. She proposed eight to start, and I got her up to sixteen, so I'm feeling really good about that, Kate, even though.
We'll take sixteen.
We'll take sixteen and we'll continue to look for other options and resolutions to. But the, the other side of this for me, and I talked to, I've talked to a number of people in the area that do this work, and pretty much twenty hours a week is considered full-time with children. And so when we have someone trying to do thirty-five hours a week with children, they, it taps them out. And if they're onsite for thirty-five hours a week, then they can't say no to the kids. And so trying to figure out really what's healthy for this position is also part of my strategy. Like, what is it that really, we can say, this is a healthy level of work for a school counselor to do? Because, yeah, we could easily have them seeing a hundred kids here, you know, in some, some smaller ways and some larger ways, and that's not sustainable for that staff. So, so part of my working with Emma and part of my thought process is what is it we really can ask? And when is it more appropriate for us to have Stonewall, for example, come visit a class, rather than having our counselor attempt to do that? You know, so how do we find the resources that best meets the need without tapping out the staff? Because, you know, I've worked, since I've been here, I think I've worked with four different counselors, and three of them have burned out. And so, and that's not a blue-up issue, that's a counselor. You know, it's not from talking it through, it's not like, oh, Blue Oak is this terrible place. It isn't. It's just demands of that kind of work are so large. And so trying to figure out what it is we need to serve the students, and when is it we need to go find other resources or do something different? And so that's part of it for me, too.
Karen, did you have any questions or comments?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay, I have a few questions. So we don't have the contract up. So I, can you put the contract up? I don't know if, so, and these, these are my questions. I'm guessing this all go, is all going to be offsite?
Not necessarily.
Okay, because that was a big one, because what if we have children with transportation issues, parents that were worried maybe might not be extra motivated to get them there?
When I talked to Emma today, we discussed what we see from Victor and Catholic Services, which is they come in to meet with a student at a certain time, so we schedule, we would schedule.
Perfect, okay.
We also talked about, because it has worked for some of the students during distance learning and the options.
Oh, okay.
And because we've seen, we've seen some students, and I think especially in the upper grade. We've seen some students and I think especially in the upper grades that are almost more comfortable. It's like a safety, you know, for them to not be in the same room with a person. And so that we also talked about that as an option. As well. So the idea of having a team of people who can be flexible, it's exciting to me.
And then I would assume that she would, because I I would assume some of these need to be private, so making sure. Who's on the counseling has a safe private spot, even if it's maybe provided here at school and so, okay. Because that would be my other concern, but I would assume they have safeguards in place for that. And then how long would the contract be? Is this a month to month? Are we going to commit for the whole year?
I'm committing, I'm asking to commit for the whole year. I don't want us changing counselors ministry.
And then. I put on my Kyron hat and just calculated this out. So sixteen hours, sixty-five dollars. That's basically a thousand dollars a week, which is. Fifty-four thousand dollars a year. And I was.
It's a school year, so it's thirty-eight weeks. It's only thirty-eight weeks.
Yeah, so then I would say we're actually probably saving a lot doing this as opposed to if we hired a counselor on.
Yeah, if we hired a counselor on and we're paying benefits and so forth, it would be at equally as expensive.
So you said thirty-eight weeks, I didn't even do it.
Thirty-eight weeks is is the school year.
So really that's less than forty-five dollars for the whole year. Do you know what we're budgeted for a counselor? I would assume it's more than that.
I do not know.
And then I too, Kate was like concerned sixteen hours is not enough, but that's basically three and a half hours a day and a five days. Week, so like during the school days. So that to me seems. Pretty reasonable if they did three kids a day for an hour and. I mean, I don't know what your needs are, but that seems pretty reasonable. But then also with the cost being lower. If we needed to go up to like twenty hours, that seems like if they were up for it, that we would budget wise be okay.
All of that flexibility.
Yeah, I can't I can't imagine that we're only paying our council at forty thousand a year.
No.
No, there's no way. It's got to be higher than that because the the education that's required, so. Okay, and then and then I'm assuming that you would probably get like some sort of invoice for them, what student? How many hours, things like that, or whatever you need privacy I knows in there, too.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I mean, this seems like a really great solution. To what we need and the fact that they can be onsite, come onsite if need be, too. I would assume that teachers would want that support if they needed it onsite, okay? Is do you know, because if there was going to be. Mileage associated that, I I think it would be good if they wanted it.
She hasn't asked for it, so I would not.
Okay.
Propose.
Okay.
I mean, there's.
Or if the fee's a little higher if they come onsite, nothing like that.
She hasn't done that, so I'm I'm satisfied that she is including those costs in her billing.
Okay.
And that's, you know, we also have that same kind of process for some of our special ed. OT and and things like that are very small and we just have a few and that's not usually part of it.
Well, I would I would actually not be opposed to paying mileage for them to come because. I don't want that to be a barrier not to my like get paid the same amount whether they're not.
I don't think it will be. I mean, I I don't think that from the standpoint of the professionals, I'm not thinking that that is.
Okay.
Is going to be an issue. They're going to be here if I think the kids might be here.
Okay.
And I don't know how long further travel, so they may live down the block, you know, so.
Yeah.
So I really don't, you know.
Okay.
If it's an issue, it's one for for Emma and I can talk about it. And if it is an issue, we can, I can bring it back down.
Okay.
So I'll ask her how they're handling, how she's thinking about.
Yeah, I just don't, it's more like not wanting it to be a barrier.
Yeah.
They're like, well, I can try to, but if it's, I don't know, just something to think about.
Yeah, I my sense is it's it's not going to keep them from wanting to see the kids face to face.
Okay.
Because that's the question.
Okay, great.
Susan, I'm wondering, oh, wait a second, it might have just left. I had it for a little bit. Um, oh, I'm wondering about. Teacher communication with the counselors. I know, you know, like when we have a child, you know, we've we've put in the referral, you know, they've started to see the child. You know, typically with a school counselor onsite. We would be kind of checking in, you know, like this kid is really struggling, you know, this time of day with. Or this just happened or, you know, things like that, like there's always been a certain level of communication between the teacher and the counselor. Is that something that would be available?
I wouldn't see why not, Kate, that part of if they've if they've said this is a. You know, I'm working with a student, then they're going to want to know what's going on with that student, so. But again, I can ask that question, how she sees that going, you know.
Because oftentimes, you know, like situations change quite quickly for children. So I think that a certain level of communication would be necessary.
Absolutely.
Well, even if, I don't know how specific your contracts need to be. I can form a world where they have to be really specific. So even if there was something written in there that. You know, there's a fifteen to thirty minute check-in a month available, you know, or few available to teachers. I know we know Emma and that's great, but just kind of making sure there's an expectation and that's maybe separate from the sixteen hours. Or if we're over the sixteen hours, we'll offer it, but just so that we we, you know, we have that availability for the teachers. Because Kate's right, that seems like a really important piece, too.
So in the item here that I'm reading, provide mental health referrals, interventions and consults for up to sixteen hours a week. So the consults would be what what Kate is talking.
Okay.
Maybe consults.
Cool, so it can be.
And then other duties and tasks or changes of services.
Okay.
May be agreed upon, so.
Oh, okay, great.
That's in the contract. So that sounds good again, have that.
Okay. It sounds like a really good solution. Anybody, anything else? Okay. I will go ahead and make a motion. To approve. Or to move to the Emma Todd contract to the board for approval.
I will second the motion.
Okay, Kyron, thank you. And then. Amber Brown, aye.
Susan Divinigati, aye.
Kate McDonald, aye.
Okay, approved.
Kyron comes aye, sorry.
Oh.
I'm on a different computer and I'm struggling with Zoom today.
Sorry, thank you, Kyron.
No problem.
I'm excited when a day is over here. Okay, and then the SLP.
That's a speech and language pathologist.
Okay.
And that contract is not ready yet.
Okay.
An email conversations with. With the people, they have some paperwork they need to do, so they haven't been able to present me with a contract yet. And so that one will wait, but it is in process, right?
Okay. So we're going to move on. And to three point three, approve meeting dates.
It's just the second Tuesday of every month, still, right?
Except for March, because that's a break.
Yeah, I was gonna say that's not be spring break, right?
I moved to approve the current dates. As presented.
I will go ahead and second it. I'm assuming nobody had anything to say, sorry.
The only thing I worry about is that February fourteenth, that's a holiday.
I thought this thing.
I got a little one at home. But if it's a fast meeting, I'm in.
We'll make a note to keep that one short. Yeah, if at all possible, we'll keep it short.
Okay, so Amber Brown, aye.
Susan Divinigati.
Kyron comes aye.
Kate McDonald, aye.
Yeah, I can send it. Alex is going to send us a copy, too.
It was, but I might as well do it again.
Yeah. Okay, cool. Let's see, oh, Sustainable School Design Task Force. So it looks like we have reviewed strategic plan information.
Do we have an executive director's report?
Oh, did I skip that?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm only trying to get iron early. Okay.
I I will just say briefly, our main focus from a financial standpoint is getting students enrolled, getting. The positions that we had open filled, which you're helping with tonight. And so that's my main, those are the things that will work. So also keep it pretty short.
Okay, sorry. Now we're moving on. Okay, Sustainable School Task Force. Okay, do we have the strategic?
So how? I was a little confused. There's this one that has the full and then there was the addendum from last year. There's no wish that you prefer.
So. So we've dealt with one, we've dealt with. Two. Dealt with three. We're dealing with four. Amber working, we're dealing with five. So we're making progress in all of both one areas.
Great.
Was too advanced or still, that number two is still not. Very well, but it's not to change.
Oh, there we go, we're good.
So that's one we still need to look at and and consider how we might want to do that. That is also a parent engagement issue as well, rather than really, we can talk about it here, but we're not going to do a lot of. Other other than maybe helping to keep that discussion going. It's not really. That's outreach task force, not the sustainable school. Okay, there we go. We're the sustainable schools task force. That is not our responsibility.
Okay.
Okay, so we really are this one and we have made progress in all. And our, we've made progress on all of the items. Number five is really the only one that's not complete and that's not to yet.
Would we add to this? Like, would we add the preschool program onto this?
Um, we could. That suggestion can we make here and then we have the.
Okay.
The board meeting, which is what we'll do the actual update.
Okay.
So, yeah, are there things we want to add to to this?
Oh, okay.
You know, thoughts we want to consider. That's no, that's helpful because I was just going.
Yeah, we're done, okay.
Because we have, you know.
So we were just talking about Kate and Kyron, whether we wanted to add to this. And so I brought up the preschool program.
Expanded learning program.
They expanded learning program. That would definitely probably be on here.
Continue to work on, we see.
Yeah, for costs. Yeah. So is there anything you guys want to add that we would or disagree with on adding those to?
Suggest.
Suggesting those to for goals for the council.
Are those ready to be goals would be my question. If they're ready to be goals, I don't see why that wouldn't be a part of this.
Considering that we're asking Riley to do some serious work on it this year, I think we are ready to make it a goal.
Okay, then I'm in.
That will support her work as well. As part of the strategic plan.
Yeah, she definitely supporting a lot of this within our sustainable schools. Because I would say one maybe to add in the future is once we see what it looks like for adding an Orville location. Because that could be something cool to put on the sustainable schools, but I wouldn't think we're there yet.
Yeah, we need to do some more research to make sure that's what the community wants.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We haven't done that first step work yet, so.
Okay.
I could see that being number.
Okay. And so we'll add those two. And for, do we need a motion to suggest to add those or if we just add those and then a motion to send it to the, what we need?
I think a motion to suggest those new goals to to the.
Charter Council.
Charter Council.
Okay. So I will make a motion to suggest the two goals that we just. Talked about. And to the Charter Council Board.
I can second it.
Great, thank you, Kate. Okay, so we can go for Amber Brown, aye.
Susan Divinigati, aye.
Kyron comes aye.
Kate McDonald, aye.
So let's roll down and look at all three, just to make sure we aren't missing something.
Oh, yeah.
Nope. Those all seem to be beyond the the scope of this committee, so there we go.
Yep. Cool, right?
That makes me happy. We don't know how happy that makes me.
Still working on this one. Yeah, yeah, great.
Yeah.
And cool, so then we can, next meeting, September fourteenth. Same time, same place. And we, is everybody good? Yeah, then we can adjourn the meeting. Great, thank you, guys. Good, awesome. I know, I was kidding. I was like, this is going to be a slow one, like we're just going to boom, boom, boom. There's nothing going on now. Everything like that. Yeah, I know, every time you think like that.
Hey, Susan, I emailed you earlier.